Board of Trustees meeting, thank you all for being here. I'd like to call this meeting into order and then please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Oh, Austin, please come on up, sir. Yeah, come on, come on, buddy. I'm sorry. Come on, partner, you want to lead us in the pledge? All right, partner, you ready? It's all you.
You start it, buddy.
Good. Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good job, guys. Nice job, partners.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, my apologies. Okay, next on the, first item on the agenda is our special presentation, and, and folks, I'd just like to say a few special words. You know, my first two years as trustee, myself, Mr. Becker, we got to work with trustee Logue. He was chairman of the board, did a fine job last year, but I'm honored and privileged to sit next to you for at least another two years for myself, but you're a good man, good leader, integrity, appreciate you very much, and it's an honor to have you sitting here. And I know Mr. Becker wanted to say a few words as well.
Yeah, we appreciate your leadership and guidance, you know, getting us started over the, over the past two years and looking forward to serving another two years with you, at a minimum.
We got a, at a minimum. We got a lot of fun, good things coming to Union Township here soon, and we are rounding third on a lot of things, bringing them home, and it's going to be good. I, I think 2024 will be an exciting year for us, for, for the township, and we've got a lot of cool things coming, we can't necessarily say what they are, but things that you've helped spearhead. The construction in East Gate will be done by the end of the year, and so, but, Mr. Logue, Mike, honored to work with you, sir, and I'm also honored to swear you in as well. So, it's my pleasure, my friend.
Well, thank you, gentlemen, both, and really, I mean, I'm, I'm just excited about the opportunity to continue serving the community, you know, a community that my family and I love and to be a part of, and it is very exciting, looking forward definitely to the next four years here in Union Township and serving the residents and having the great opportunity to work with a wonderful board and staff and directors, employees here at Union Township, so, look in respect of everybody's time and to continue to just do the people's work, let's press that forward and let's go do the, have my family join up here and we'll do the swearing in, and I think that's how we'll handle it. So, thank you.
Yeah.
Mr. Logue, please repeat after me. Raise your hand. I, Michael Logue.
I, Michael Logue.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Ohio.
And the Constitution of the State of Ohio.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
That I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of trustee of Union Township.
The duties of trustee of Union Township.
Of which office I have been duly elected.
Of which office I have been duly elected.
Mr. Logue, congratulations.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Appreciate it. Yes, sir.
Let's get a standard picture up here. Thank you. Give it all to us, please. Yeah. Thank you. Thank you, all trustees. Thank you. Your kids don't want to stay for the exciting meeting?
I think they're gonna go get ice cream.
Good move.
My heart's torn, I want them to come up here and sit with me. It's good that they're getting ice cream, they're a distraction. Uh huh, that's right.
Yeah, well, just in case, this is okay, gentlemen, uh, in case I'm not here for the comments from the board, just to give an update on what we did last night, if this is okay, gentlemen, it's kind of out of order, but just wanted to announce at this business meeting, great news, I'm very excited, last night we had a special meeting and we appointed our new administrator, which, the administrator of the township, to put in perspective, is kind of like the CEO or the president of the township, if, if you will, and last night we appointed Corey Wright to come back, he'll be officially taking a seat next to us on January 10th, and this was a no-brainer, it was great to have him back, he had a brief vacation for a year and a half or so, and, but he's gonna hit the ground running, we laid out our expectations for him, what we'd like to see in the future, he's on board, and for me, this was a no-brainer, and I think that both trustees would agree as well. So, wanted to just make sure that was clear and so there's, just clear the air on that and make sure everyone knew, and, but we're, we're very excited to have him back, he's gonna be great for us, so, gentlemen, did you have any comments at all on that?
No, yeah, you said all very well, and, yeah, we're, I think we're all excited to have him back.
Great, great. Um, yeah, no, just, he, he kind of exactly stated it, that he's worked through a sabbatical from the township and, you know, as I kind of see it, my youngest child there, he saw the daughter, I was walking out of the hospital and I was having a conversation with him, extending his offer for township administrator about two years ago, so I just, I take it as he's accepted the offer, and it's, it's exciting, and we look forward to, to working with him as we carry out the business of the people, so thank you.
Perfect, yeah, thank you. All right, gentlemen, is there any old business to discuss? Okay, seen none, moving on to new business, our consent agenda, gentlemen, I'll entertain a motion for our consent agenda approval of minutes for our November 14, 2023 regular meeting minutes, our November 14, 2023 zoning minutes, November 15, 2023 emergency meeting minutes, and 2020, I'm sorry, November 28, 2023 special meeting minutes, and then item B is approval of payments as prepared by our fiscal officer, Ron Campbell, and item C is our approval of monthly financial report as prepared by our fiscal officer, Ron Campbell.
Sound moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Mr. Campbell, roll call.
Mr. Becker?
Yes.
Mr. Logue?
Yes.
Mr. Dills?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Great. All right, next item is our motion agenda, gentlemen, I'm gonna entertain a motion for our approval of purchase orders exceeding $10,000 as recommended by Matt Taylor, our interim administrator, and Ms. Taylor, do you want to go over those first?
Yes, sir. The first is for Hair Can Enterprises, it's for the newsletter printing and postage at $15,000. Second is Stryker Sales Corporation for the annual tech service agreement and patient loading and moving equipment at $40,100. Next is Stryker Sales for the annual tech service agreement for the cardiac treatment devices at $32,166.14. Next is Wex Bank, the estimated fuel usage for one month at $16,000. Next is Axon Enterprises for 10 new tasers at $28,633.34. And next is Wex Bank for the estimated fuel usage of one month at $15,000. Next is the Otis Elevator for the E-Pop Elevator Controller Upgrade at $19,800. And last is the, to the Claremont County Treasurers for the 2024 Annual Road Resurfacing Program at $1.75 million. And that concludes.
Mr. Becker, I see you have items circled, I'll let you ask your question first.
Chief Ray, tell, tell us about the tasers, you know, why, why do you need new ones? Are these replacement tasers? Is this for, you know, how, do they go bad after a while? They wear out? Educate us, please.
Yes, sir, these are the next generation of taser, Taser 10. The cost that Mr. Taylor just identified is the first year installment, this is a five-year plan, we pay them out over five years, this got significant cost cut in that first year because we're allowed to trade in the old tasers. After five years, they will not warranty those anymore, so if they break, continue to break down, which they start to do after the fourth or fifth year, we basically don't get anything back on our warranty.
And how are the new ones, this new generation, better than what you were placing?
So, the new generation of tasers are able to be fired, fired up to 40 feet now instead of 25, so it gives the officer a little more safety in the event that the officer would have to fire a second round of probes if the first one was ineffective, the deployment of the second round is quicker just because of the way the nomenclature is on the taser. So, there are some added safety features that make it easier to use for the officer and more safer.
Great, thank you.
Mr. Becker, would you, to confirm that they do work fine, would you like to test that out?
Be the target, you know, you go through the Citizens Police Academy, you get the opportunity to beat the target, and I decline.
You declined.
And I continue to decline.
That's one, did you have anything else, sir?
On the 1.7 million for the road construction, so, I guess, as the public understands, we did a, a survey or we contracted with, with a company that looked at all of our roads in Union Township and then rated them from, you know, good shape to failing, and so, we're using that list, and that 1.7 million, is that all the failing roads or, yeah, so we're working from, you know, the worst ones, and that's how we're gonna be improving township roads going forward. It's all, Chairman, thank you.
Mr. Logan, any?
No, thank you.
All right, gentlemen, I'll entertain a motion for the approval of purchase orders exceeding $10,000, as recommended by our interim township administrator, Matt Taylor.
Sound moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Mr. Campbell, roll call.
Mr. Becker?
Yes.
Mr. Logue?
Yes.
Mr. Dills?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Great, and, next one, Mr. Campbell, would you like to explain or would you like Ms. Taylor to explain?
Sure, I'll take it. So, this is a, a motion to approve and execute the collective bargaining agreement negotiated between Local 3412, International Association of Firefighters, and the Board of Trustees of Union Township, effective through December 31st, 2024.
Great. Perfect, gentlemen, I'll entertain a motion for the collective bargaining agreement, ratification, motion to approve and execute the collective bargaining agreement negotiated between the Local 3412, International Association of Firefighters, and the Board of Trustees of Union Township, effective through December 31st, 2024.
Sound moved.
Second.
Any discussion? I'll have one thing, I see all of our firefighters are here, so a lot of pressure on us, and it's been a long time coming, I'm glad we got a deal done, and you folks are happy, we're happy, life is good, so, that's all I will say. Anything else, gentlemen?
You said.
Great, Mr. Campbell, roll call.
Mr. Becker?
Yes.
Mr. Logue?
Yes.
Mr. Dills?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Congratulations, guys. All right, item C is appointment to the OKI Board. Gentlemen, I'll entertain a motion to appoint Michael Logue as the Union Township Board of Trustees representative on the Director of Board, Board of Directors for the Ohio, Kentucky, Indiana Regional Council of Governments.
Sound moved.
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Campbell, roll call.
Mr. Becker, yes. Mr. Logue?
Yes.
Mr. Dills?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, item D is our Christmas tree drop-off and recycling program, Ms. Taylor, you have anything for that or you want me to go ahead?
It's just the same as every year, it'll be the drop-off locations behind the police department or behind the service garage, we'll have a sign, obviously designated in the area, and we just ask that all the ornaments are off and it's not wrapped, and then we'll take it for, from there and get it mulched.
Real trees only, correct?
Real trees only, yes, sir.
Just, I knew the answer, just confirming for the public. The, okay, gentlemen, I'll entertain a motion to establish the dates for the Christmas tree drop-off as January 1st through January 31st, the entire month of January 2024, for the Union Township residents, the designated drop-off area, signs will be posted, is located behind the service garage at 4312 Glen SD Woodensville Road.
Sound moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Mr. Campbell, roll call.
Mr. Becker?
Yes.
Mr. Logue?
Yes.
Mr. Dills?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, and, item C, legislation agenda, they're pushing on well. All right, Resolution 2023-55, and Resolution to Approve an Overlay District for Hank Prior, application for site 3920 McMahon Road, and, Mr. Campbell, would you like to take this over?
Yeah, this, this is, was the action that, that you guys voted on the last meeting.
That's right.
This is just, just doing a formal resolution to the same, so, this is where we approved the overlay district for Mr. Hank Prior, he was the applicant for the site at 3920 McMahon Road, Marshall 413112C245, totaling approximately 1.7 acres of property within the Buxton Road focus area overlay, commercial corridor district.
Great, is there a motion?
Sound moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Mr. Campbell, roll call.
Mr. Becker?
Yes.
Mr. Logue?
Yes.
Mr. Dills?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, and, Mr. Campbell, Resolution 2023-56.
2023-56 is a resolution approving the permanent 2024 annual appropriation resolutions. What this allows us to do is get, get this posted and all the departments then can start entering their purchase orders so that, right after our reorganization meeting, I can go in and approve them, and everything will be online to start the new year.
Great. Gentlemen, I'll entertain a motion to approve Resolution 2023-56, a resolution approving a permanent 2024 annual appropriations resolution.
Sound moved.
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Campbell, roll call.
Mr. Becker?
Yes.
Mr. Logue?
Yes.
Mr. Dills?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, next resolution, item C, Mr. Campbell?
So, 2023-57 is a resolution appointing a member of Union Township Board of Trustees to be on the Claremont County 911 Program Review Committee. Because we are the biggest township, we have a seat at that table, although you'll remember that we have our own dispatcher at Union Township, but they still want our input to work with the county.
That's great. And, great, and gentlemen, I'll entertain a motion to approve Resolution 2023-57, Resolution Appointing a Member of the Union Township Board of Trustees to be on the Claremont County 911 Program Review Committee.
Sound moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Who's that gonna be?
The member.
Warm welcome to volunteer for that, unless you're the one who you would like to.
You want it?
It's fine.
No problem.
Sure.
It's all yours.
Great. All right, so let me, let me, let me, let me scratch that motion, let's redo this. So, gentlemen, I'll, I'll entertain a motion to approve Resolution 2023-57, a resolution appointing myself, Chairman Joe Dills, as of the Union Township Board of Trustees, to be on the Claremont County 911 Program Review Committee.
Sound moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Mr. Campbell, roll call.
Mr. Becker?
Yes.
Mr. Logue?
Yes.
Mr. Dills?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Chief, I'll try not to let you down, sir. The, all right, next resolution, 2023-58, Mr. Campbell?
So, 2023-58 is a resolution approving a contract with the Claremont County Board of County Commissioners to complete a resurfacing of certain roads in Union Township in 2024, which is the 1.75 million that you just approved.
Great. And that is all coming out of ARPA funds, correct?
That's correct. So, the, and that includes a contingency in there, in case there runs a little bit over.
Great, great, so, so layman's terms, what we're just now approving, so everyone understands, 1.75 million is a lot of money, and we are gonna be repaving all the failed roads that Mr. Taylor was talking about, that entire lump of money is not coming out of the general fund for our township, general fund is, you pay your property taxes, it goes into our general fund, and then we disperse it, make the schools whole, runs our fire department, service, that's the general fund, runs our parks, everything, it is not coming out of that fund, we got so much money from the federal government during COVID, and we're using that money, so it doesn't, technically, all tax money is your money, but it's not coming directly out of your property taxes, just so you understand that, so, and we have to use all the money or allocate it by the end of next year, is that correct?
That's correct, it's gotta be allocated by December 31st, 2024, and spent by 2026.
Okay, so it's gotta be allocated by the end of next year, and who knows how our federal government runs and if they'll, we're gonna take back the money, so we have to allocate it now. All right, so, gentlemen, I will entertain a motion for, to approve Resolution 2023-58, a resolution approving a contract to Claremont County Board of Commissioners to complete resurfacing of the certain roads in Union Township in 2024.
Sound moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Mr. Campbell, roll call.
Mr. Becker?
Yes.
Mr. Logue?
Yes.
Mr. Dills?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, Resolution 2023-59, Mr. Campbell?
2023-59 is a resolution imposing a moratorium on the establishment or commencement of adult-use cannabis operators within Union Township for 90 days and declaring it as an emergency. What this resolution does, there's a lot of things that are not finalized, the voters voted to legalize adult-use marijuana, but there's a whole lot of things that have to work here about who's gonna be the authority over it, how licensing is gonna work, what facilities are gonna be able to do it, what this is gonna do is pump the brakes a little bit until we get those details and we've had time to sit down and come up with a strategy of how we're gonna do this.
Great, thank you, Mr. Campbell. Gentlemen, I'll entertain a motion to approve Resolution 2023-59, a resolution imposing a moratorium on the establishment or commencement of adult-use cannabis operators within the Union Township for 90 days and declaring it an emergency.
Sound moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes.
Please.
Just, just want to clarify, Mr. Campbell, so this moratorium then aligns exactly with the moratorium that's currently in place on the medical marijuana, is that correct?
That's correct.
So then when the board addresses this, I guess in 90 days, we'll be addressing both at the same time.
That's the way I understand it.
So, and Marshall addressing this again, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
It's all right, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Mr. Campbell, roll call.
Mr. Becker?
Yes.
Mr. Logue?
Yes.
Mr. Dills?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, public hearings, and so, when we do our public hearings case, I will start, well, first off, Mr. McCormick will give the presentation, and then anyone that is pro, that is for, the zoning resolution will be allowed to speak, I will swear you in, you'll be under oath, and then anyone that is against the zoning case will be allowed to speak, I'll, maybe we'll lause some back and forth, and then after everyone's done speaking, and then we'll have discussion from the board, then we'll vote on it. All right, gentlemen, Union Township Zoning Case 11-23-0 is an Oscar, Mr. McCormick, go ahead.
Okay, so this is Case 11230, applicant owner is Tim Turton for Tim, for Turton Holdings Family LLC, site location is 1050 Round Bottom Road, you can see the parcel number referenced in your report and on this slide, the site involved is 5.03 acres, it's zone industrial, and it's within the Little Miami Lower East Fork Corridor F focus area. Here on this slide, you can see the location of the site relative to the vicinity of the area, around Bottom Road, surrounding properties, you can see the existing zoning and what's around it, it's primarily zone industrial in that area except for across the road, where much of that that you see there to the south, I think is part of the Cincinnati Nature Center property, and then there's some estate residential property there on the west side of Barge Salt running that area. And in terms of the zoning resolution, we're looking at Article 13 as far as the applicable items for the focus areas, sections 1300, 1310, and in this case, 1305, because we're looking at a natural resource district for the focus area involved. In terms of the comprehensive plan, the Little Miami Corridor area, which is where this is at, is identified as an environmentally sensitive area with large portions of the area contained within areas prone to regular flooding, which in this case, the property is not within a flood zone area, well away from the river and the creek. The area in general is primarily zoned for industrial and residential, residential uses, and more recently, several industrial pockets have developed along Round Bottom Road. So, this site here is in particular the Ready Rock site, was initially built in 2005, and that's what you see here, I don't have a newer aerial that shows the, I think that might be the addition on the back, the addition was built in 2017, 2018 time period, and this particular case, the applicant is wishing to establish an addition in the front that's 4,240 square feet, so towards Round Bottom Road essentially. In general, the review of the proposal indicates that the proposed use is consistent with the zoning district in which it's located, in addition to that property and surrounding area. Plan allows for lower intensity industrial uses throughout the corridor with some infill uses, provided that natural resources are protected, the site's already well-developed, so the addition of, of this proposed is not really gonna change anything significantly, does not impact a hillside area or, or area of significant, significant slope, does not involve a flood plain or flood-prone area, and does not involve an area that's been identified as having significant natural resources. Request is generally, is considered reasonable by staff, all the required elements of the site plan have been satisfied thus far, and in the near future, signage for the property that is there on Round Bottom Road is most likely gonna be modified, and we'll have an acknowledgement of Cincinnati Sands facility and potentially other uses and businesses in that area, and the proposed signage at that time will need to adhere to the standards of the overlay district. So, there's the proposed plan addition, this is an overlay of the proposed road that we saw a few months ago with Cincinnati Sands shown, and then the area highlighted in green is the proposed addition space, this is looking at the site at the oblique, which is a little older, doesn't have Hamilton Safe look on here, couldn't get a better oblique. The slides here indicate the current conditions of the property, you can see the sign I mentioned there on the left, the site's basically well-left of this, this is looking east to southeast on Round Bottom Road, this is looking the other direction, west to northwest on Round Bottom Road, you can see Hamilton Safe on the right, this is looking across the Barge Salt, bottom, Round Bottom Road intersection, and this is looking northeast into the driveway that feeds into Ready Rock, that will come off of the new township road, and that addition space is kind of in the central portion of the slide where you see a little sign above the Ready Rock door way there. This is looking from that access drive west to northwest at Hamilton Safe and what's adjacent to the site, this is looking northeast directly at where the addition would be on the left-hand side of the slide in front of Ready Rock, the sign there, it's basically just gonna be an extension of that, what you're seeing there, up to about, I think it's about 25 feet from the proposed property line, and the property that is adjacent to this site will also be owned by the Turtons, they're looking to close on that property, I think buy out the other owner in January. This is looking southeast from that same perspective or of the previous slide, the eastern side yard, this is looking northwest at the adjacent property that the township owns behind Hamilton Safe, and this is looking southwest from that addition space area towards Round Bottom Road. Recommended items left to be addressed were just to address anything from the related other agencies and to ensure that all freestanding signs associated with property would be limited to monument signage capped at a height no more than 12 feet finished grade, and in accordance with the zoning resolution, the board of trustees' role is to follow Section 1310 to approve, modify, or deny the focus area overlay district application, which in this case involves again the expansion of the existing Ready Rock manufacturing facility.
Great, thank you, Mr. McCormick. Mr. Becker, any questions?
No.
Mr. Logue?
No.
Great. At this time, if there is anybody that'd like to speak that is a proponent, that is for this case, now would be your time to speak. Okay, seen none, is there anyone that's against this case? Okay, seen none, I'm gonna go and close public comments. All right, gentlemen, open up for the board trustees for discussion. Mr. Becker?
I have no objection.
Likewise, Mr. Logue?
No issues.
Pretty cut and dry? Yeah, let's go. All right, gentlemen, I'll entertain a motion for Union Township Zoning Case 11-23-0 is an Oscar, request for an overlay district plan approval for and Oscar, request for an overlay district plan approval for site at ten fifty round bottom road, parcel number four zero three one zero eight, season Charlie, zero seven one, for the potential expansion of the Ready Rock manufacturing facility.
Sound off.
Second.
Any further discussion? Mr. Campbell will call.
Mr. Becker?
Yes.
Mr. Loeb?
Yes.
Mr. Dills?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Alright, next, um, public hearing's case is going to be Union Township zoning case twelve dash two three dash O's and Oscar. Uh, Mr. McCormick, go ahead.
Okay, so you mentioned, uh, the case number. Applicant is the, uh, is the Atlantic Sign Company. Site is forty-six eleven East Gate Boulevard with the parcel number being referenced on the slide and in the staff report on a one point one four five acre property. Uh, it's own B one business and it's in the central state road thirty-two retail commercial corridor focus area. Uh, here's a slide indicating that what the site looks like in the vicinity. The portion of the affected property is in the north side of that building. The zoning of the property and everything that surrounds it with, uh, within several hundred feet is business. Uh, the relevant portions of the zoning resolution for overlay districts again are in article thirteen. As I mentioned earlier, section thirteen hundred and thirteen ten. And the central retail corridor, uh, is the heart of the township with the commercial and business uses. They, um, serves as a new, where, where we see a lot of new development activities, including infill development. Significant debris development is likely to kill the future people in close proximity of potential to East Gate Mall and surrounding property with this particular site. And, um, additional note, East Gate Boulevard is a major collector of Corleyan Road with about fifteen thousand five hundred daily trips in the area of this intersection. Uh, other things that are called for, uh, architectural standards that promote cohesive and attractive design, enhance quality of life, sidewalks, shared driveway and park configurations, and site developments to be conducted in a manner that focuses on maximizing land use efficiency with infill development and the use of traditional building materials, um, adequate vegetative buffering landscaping strategies along shared property lines and so forth. As far as the background of this particular case, a proposal involves the installation, addition of two wall signs on a north and northwestern portion of the existing retail center building that you see here in this slide. The zoning permit has already been issued for the northeastern front face of the building, um, as it faces East Gate Boulevard. And these signs would all be for Chase Bank. And so this is the area of the property or the building. These are the proposed signs that are above and beyond, um, what has been permitted. Sorry, the top sign actually has been permitted that you see on this particular slide. It is the bottom sign and the, on this slide here, um, the other signs that are considered, uh, uh, more or less in need of a variance of about seventy-two, um, square feet. In terms of the review of the applications, um, is the proposal is consistent with the recommendations of the adopted land use plan as well as the purpose and intent of the overlay district regulations. Current retail center on the property contains men's warehouse and supercuts. Both of these users contain signage on the eastern fit, front face of the building as well as the western, uh, face rear of the building. Applicant wishes to also establish a sign on northwestern face of the building consistent with, uh, uh, in particular, the men's warehouse, uh, as the corner will happen on that particular property. In consideration of the previous zoning approvals associated with this particular site as well as others in the area, staff finds the applicant to request for relief in art, up in article nine, text from nine oh seven of the township zoning resolution to allow more signage area than would otherwise be permitted strictly to be reasonable. Now here are some pictures of the site. So the building, effective portion of the building will look right here. This is long East Gate Boulevard. This is at the intersection looking from southeast to south on East Gate Boulevard. This is looking directly at the building looking northwest. Site's, the buildings on the right. This is looking at that area where we permitted the sign on the front, east building elevation. This is the north building elevation that you can see on East Gate Boulevard. Same area. This is looking southeast from the, I think it's the Firestone property where one of, where these signs are proposed there. And this is looking from the mall access, the other direction. In terms of the items that remain, um, we need to address potentially any concerns from related a, other agencies and we would need the final revised signage plan to be submitted to obtain the necessary twofold zoning permit. And, uh, aside from that, we're looking at, uh, section thirteen ten of the zoning resolution in terms of the board trustee's role in this process to enter a motion to approve, modify, or deny the, uh, overlay district application as submitted along with any other per, or modifications to be necessary. Any questions?
So, Mr. McCormick, just, the building already exists. We're just approving the signage. Is that correct?
Yes.
Great. Okay. Mr. Becker, any questions?
No.
Mr. Loeb?
No.
Great. Is there anyone that would, uh, uh, that is a proponent of this case who'd like to speak? Oh, great. Come on, please. This is public hearing case. I have to swear you in. Okay. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, any other truths, so have you got?
Yes.
Great. Please state your name and address, please.
My name is Beth Alini. I'm with Atlantic Sign Company, uh, two three two eight Florence Avenue. I'm, I'm just, I'm here if you have any questions. Um, I did wanna point out that one of the things that Chase, Chase has multiple branches out here. This is gonna become a permanent branch. I, I think there's a rumor that maybe this was temporary. This is the permanent branch and then the other branch is gonna kind of fall off. So it's replacing it. And when they originally came in, Chase was under the impression that the front, they had double frontage. So that's why they originally submitted for the multiple signs because they thought the frontage on the, the north side of the street counted, but apparently it doesn't because it's not, because of how the building is shaped. It sits on the parcel weird. So if they had that frontage, the signage would be part of their, would be within code if I'm not mistaken. If we included that frontage, the signage that they're asking for would be within code. But because of how the building's positioned on that parcel, it's not.
Got it.
If that makes sense to me.
Yep. I'm sorry, I don't know. Did you have anything else?
No, I'm just, I'm here for questions mainly.
So, 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 uh, and this is the Chase Bank that was over on, um, Glen Estee Woodensville, correct?
Over on what? I'm sorry.
The Glen Estee Woodensville, correct?
I think so, yeah. I, they're, the, they're, at one point Chase was looking at two locations.
Yep.
And then they got, they got some issues with the second one. I think it was, it was on East Gate Boulevard as well, so this one's gonna become the permanent location.
Easy enough. I have no problem with it being on both sides. It's fair enough. Least we can do.
There's three of them.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Okay, okay. I'm just kidding.
Yeah, so.
Yeah, it ma, it matches exactly what aesthetically matches exactly what men's warehouse has.
Mr. Becker, any questions?
No, I'm good.
Mr. Loeb?
Nope.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks for explaining. Thank you. Is there any, also as a proponent of this case? Okay, seeing none. Is there anyone that is a opponent against this case? Alright, seeing none. I'm gonna go and close public comments. Gentlemen, any discussion on this?
No, good.
No comment, simple.
Pretty cut and dry. Just glad they're staying here and O dot forced them to move, so I'm glad they're still here. Alright, uh, gentlemen, I'll entertain a motion for Union Township zoning case twelve dash two three dash O's and Oscar, request for an overlay district plan approved what forty-six eleven, East Gate Boulevard, parcel number four one three one zero five, D is in Delta, one seven two, for an additional signage added to a relocated Chase Bank.
Sound off.
Second.
Any more discussion? Mr. Campbell will call.
Mr. Becker?
Yes.
Mr. Loeb?
Yes.
Mr. Dills?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Alright, Union Township zoning case thirteen dash two three dash O's and Oscar. Uh, Mr. McCormick, go ahead, sir. Thank you, ma'am, by the way.
Okay, we are, I actually have the old case number on this slide with thirteen twenty-three O as the correct, uh, number. Applicant is Charles Frankis. Site's eleven thirty-six old state route seventy-four. Parcel number is referenced here and in the report on a point nine nine acre site that's own business B one. That is within the old state route seventy-four Summerside Willoughby corridor focus area. Uh, this slide here shows the vicinity map of the area and what is in the general vicinity. Uh, this slide here shows the parcel and what surrounds it, particularly on the northeast side of the road. Um, on seventy-four is all zone business in the immediate area, probably within two hundred feet. And then across the road, uh, Holman's is own, uh, planned development that you see. And, uh, a little bit more to the southeast, you've got a residential property and then the business property after that. In terms of the, uh, relevant sections of code, we are looking at, uh, for focus areas are thirteen. Uh, sections thirteen hundred and thirteen ten, and in this case particularly thirteen oh six. Uh, this is within a neighborhood quality district focus overlay. Uh, in terms of the comprehensive plan, the proposal, um, this particular area, the township is suitable for limited commercial expansion and redevelopment, provided that smaller fragmented parcels are consolidated under cohesive development plans, limited coordinated access, lane control, et cetera. Plan also indicates that the northern portion of the corridor is most appropriate for neighborhood oriented uses. Among other things, the plan also calls for shared driveway configurations wherever practical, site development to be conducted in a manner that maximizes land use efficiency with, uh, infill development strategies for underutilized properties, for commercial development redevelopment, use of, the use of traditional building materials, deployment of adequate vegetative buffering and landscaping strategies along shared property lines and landscaping along the corridor front is required. Uh, new developments and expansion efforts along the corridor must implement my noise and or light pollution reduction strategies wherever possible. And so this particular property has been a gravel, vacant gravel lot with limited overgrown vegetation and single storage container on the site, um, or more for, for some time. Uh, as you can see on this particular slide, uh, analysis of the areas indicate that the property has primarily been used for limited outside outdoor storage areas for the past ten years or so. With the surrounding property primarily, primarily consisting of businesses and with multifamily being located towards the rear of the property. Uh, review of the particular concept plan, we have a preferred concept plan, which is for buildings. Uh, the preferred concept plan, in the case, there would be three single story self-drive up storage unit buildings for the property, all various sizes that amount to thirteen thousand square feet when you add them all up. The majority surface of the proposed site is, uh, was proposed to be gravel, which would require relief. The, the entrance would be paved, um, and the entrance would be in the southeastern portion, portion of the site as proposed. The front yard, um, uh, would require setback relief, uh, to be approximately twenty-seven feet from the front property line instead of the required forty-foot front yard setback, which in this particular area, um, the actual setback is, is in alignment with several other structures, um, although the road has moved, uh, to the northeast, um, or north more, uh, more recently, so the, or the road has shifted towards the, the front of the property more. Uh, the rear of the property that would also require setback relief on the, uh, plan, uh, with there being a proposed thirty-five foot rear setback instead of the hundred-foot setback from the, um, the rear, um, there's a typo there. It should be hundred-foot rear setback because of the fact that the rear property, uh, adjacent is residential. Currently, there is no mention regarding the specific proposed building materials, um, to ensure that the least half of the visible building faces from old seventy-four meet or exceeds attachment requirements regarding the use of high-quality traditional building materials, although there is a, a written reference that, uh, that that condition would be addressed. Um, we just don't have any specific information on it. Uh, there has not been a signage package submitted, although, and although some details have been provided with landscaping, um, to be, um, enhanced along the front and rear of the site, a formal landscaping buffer yard plan has not been submitted. And then finally, there's not been any lighting plan submitted. However, the applicant has noted that the proposed facility will feature solar lighting. And so here is the plan that you see. For basically, the intention is to preserve the existing landscaping to the rear of the property, more so rather than to plant additional materials back there. Um, I think the applicant will, when they, they speak, are also willing to potentially put in a, uh, fence there. Uh, but I will let him talk about that. And then the, there is some landscaping shown along the frontage of the property, uh, which is indicated to be a five-foot landscape buffer with minimum three-foot tall shrubs along the front. And, um, black ornamental fencing, which we received these today, which are the renderings to show what it would look like. Although the colors and the materials might be a little different on the, on the final proposal. Um, so the, alternatively, there was a, another, there was an alternative concept that was, um, submitted more or less that if the buildings were not favorable, the applicant was open to presenting an outside storage use on the property. If an outdoor storage alternative were to be considered, uh, you would have some additional compliance issues or concerns with respect to the zoning resolution, article five, section five thirty-two regarding parking and storage of vehicles and trailers, section seventeen regarding long-term parking facilities and accessible uses, article eight, sections eight oh one regarding off-street parking design standards, eight oh five regarding parking of disabled vehicles will also all be, have to be, um, considered. And then furthermore, article six, section six sixty-one of the resolution recognizes that parking and storage of automobile, motorcycle, truck, trailer, fire implements, et cetera, may be allowed in business districts under certain circumstances if such storage is situated in a completely enclosed building or facility. Um, outdoor vehicle storage areas are not recognized directly in the text. So typically, section six sixty-four has been reserved or referenced for uses not specifically or otherwise identified in the ordinance text. Um, so we'll go back to the slides here. This is the oblique looking north for context. Uh, this is, these are updated pictures, um, taken here in the last week or two, um, all except for maybe this one. I don't think that, I think this one's old, uh, because this road has slid, has slid over more and the fence in the front is gone now. So this is looking along old seventy-four, looking northwest. This is the newer picture looking along old seventy-four. Uh, this is the old picture looking southeast. Uh, this is the newer picture looking southeast. The difference is that I couldn't get a picture over by the access point when I was trying to get into the site. It was kind of difficult to get into the site and they, I asked the zoning enforcement officer to get a good picture of the access and it went over three times and because of the way traffic has been routed, it's been difficult to get pictures of the access that, that's there now. This is looking southwest across the site at the Holman's property. Uh, this is looking northwest into the site, uh, from a couple of months ago. This is looking east, a couple, week or two ago, on what's remaining on the property. The fences that was on the previous pictures have been taken down except for where the access point would be. This is looking northeast across the site. You can see the existing vegetation there in the rear of the property. Whoops. This is looking northwest across the site to the rear, the other direction. And in terms of the other recommended modifications, the applicant would need to address any concerns from related other agencies. We would need a more detailed landscaping plan. We would need a signage plan to be submitted with capped height of the monument signs to be no more than ten feet finished grade. We would need a photometric site lighting plan. We would need, um, to ensure that at least fifty percent of the proposed building materials visible to old seventy-four would be traditional building materials or high-quality building materials. Uh, we recommend there be no outdoor, short-term, long-term, or outright storage of any kind. If we're looking at enclosed structures, um, other, uh, uh, unless, otherwise, you know, if it's an outside storage use that's approved, that would be different. And, um, and in accordance with article thirteen, section thirteen ten of the zoning resolution, the board trustee's role is to either enter a motion to approve, modify, or deny the overlay district application as submitted along with any more further modifications being appropriate by the board. Um, any questions for me?
Mr. McCormick, this applicant was here last month for the same proposal, correct?
Two months.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Two, two months ago. What, what is, what is the difference between two months ago and this month?
Uh, so the proposed rear, um, setback has increased. The proposed buffer yard in the rear has increased. The buildings are, have changed a little bit. The building in the front is actually ten feet more narrow to give them a little more room, um, with the buffer yard proposed in the front. The bu, middle building has changed a little bit to be a little bit bigger and in being a little bit bigger, the circulation around that particular building between, between buildings one and three has changed. I don't know that it, it's, it doesn't make the site as easily, uh, it's not, it's not as easy to navigate on this particular fan as what, and in, on the interior portion of the site as what we would have seen two months ago. Um, so those are the main differences. The, the fencing has proposed its change is more ornamental in, uh, what's proposed in terms of that black decorative type of fence. of that black decorative type of fence. The renderings are attempting to show, I think, the use of traditional building materials in the lower portion of the building, but it didn't, it's difficult to tell what that material is. And then, the applicant spoke to me today and said that the material they're supposed to show between the doors as well, and they just didn't.
Got it. Did this go back through our zoning board, or no?
No.
No, okay. So, so, quick answer is, the first building is more narrower.
Yes.
The second building is wider, and then there's a pinch more landscaping buffer between the backside, between the residence and the backside. Is that correct?
Yeah, I think it's about, if I remember right, it's about 10 more feet. And it's to preserve the existing vegetation that's there. The last proposal was pretty much right up against the property line.
Fair enough.
It's 10 to 15 feet difference.
Great. Mr. Becker, do you have any questions?
Yeah, so there was, something was improvement in setbacks, but they're still outside of the specs, is that correct?
Yes.
Yeah, so, I have 27 in the front, when it should be 135 in the back, when it should be 100, is that correct? That's what I wrote down.
The rear is 100, the front is 40.
40? Okay.
It's all even.
And the reason why the rear's 100 is because the property in the back is being used for multifamily residential. Otherwise, it would be a different number.
Got it.
Mr. Logue, do you have any questions?
Does the applicant have a pre-application meeting with you?
No.
Okay. And then, yeah, that stands out to me as well, 35 feet away from the rear property line instead of the required 100-foot setback. And then this second additional, additionally, the applicant submitted an alternative conceptual I read that a little bit to the extent as far as if what's being proposed is not supported, then the applicant wants to do open-air storage with that location.
Yes.
Which, which also introduce, which alleviates some of the building setback issues, but it introduces other compliance issues.
Yes.
Okay, all right. I'm good, thank you.
And I did not throw that plan into the presentation because it is not the preferred scenario, but it was in your packet.
Yeah.
I could pull it up if I need to.
No, you're okay, you're okay.
No, no.
Okay. Anything else for Mr. McCormick? Great, we'll go ahead and open up this case to public hearings. If there's anyone that is a proponent of this case that is for it, now is your chance to come on up and give comment. Okay, great. Have to swear yea, if that's okay?
Sure.
Sir, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, anything but the truth, so hope you got?
I do.
Great, please state your name and address for the record.
Charlie Frankis, 8396 Wykla.
Yeah. Hey, Charlie, yeah.
Happy holidays, everybody. So, you asked a question about the changes, so we basically heard your feedback after the last hearing, decided, hey, we can definitely make some concessions, address some of the concerns, specifically about moving setbacks a little bit further away from property lines, introducing landscape buffers, high-quality building materials on all the buildings that are facing, or visible from the street, ornamental fencing across the front, landscaping. I think in general, we're pretty open to feedback if there's specific sticking points. We want to take an ugly lot, turn it into something useful, something beautiful. I brought some of my partners with me. They own and operate a storage facility in Union Township called East Side Storage. It's a beautiful facility, they've been doing it for a long time. We think we can do something similar at this site. Based on the feedback, we've made those concessions, we're happy to make other ones. As Mr. McCormick mentioned, we could put privacy fence across the back property line as well, in addition to leaving landscaping, or the natural vegetation screening, screening the property, I apologize, put the, put a privacy fence along the back as well, so, and we're, we're pretty open to, to feedback, to make this work. The setbacks are the big things. The one thing I want to point out regarding the front setback is, we're asking for 35 feet from the previous right-of-way, not the, not the property line. So, that 40-foot number that's required is from the right-of-way, not the property line. So, really, we're asking for a five-foot variance on the front side.
Got it, yeah. Gentlemen, do you have any questions for?
No.
Great, thank you, appreciate you very much. Yeah, thank you.
Thanks.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak as a proponent of this case? Please, come on up. Do you swear yea? Sir, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, anything but the truth, so hope you got?
I do.
Great, please state your name and address for the record.
Joseph Singleton, 7495 Hunley Road.
Great, yeah, thank you.
The only thing I wanted to add to that, me and my brother run East Side Storage. I just want to point out, if you guys do get a chance to take a look at that, it's been well-kept for 20 years. We want to do the same thing there. We have a facility down in Batavia, you guys have all probably seen it. We've got brick on the side of all the buildings, it looks very nice, the whole front building's brick. We're open to basically whatever you guys would like for the property, we just want to get it done. We see the need with our current facility in East Gate, that we need more units there. It's one of the better sites to put that there, so, that's it.
Gentlemen, do you have any questions for? Thank you, appreciate you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak as a proponent of this case? Okay, seen none? Is there anyone that is opposed to this case? Opposition, please, yeah, come on, sir. Appreciate it, yeah. Let me go swear yea. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, anything but the truth, so hope you got?
Yes.
Great, please state your name and address for the record.
I'm Jason Dornhagen.
Hey, Jason.
And I own the property, 1146 next door. I don't want to say I'm against it totally, I just need to know, like, what the plan is for water management, as I'm on septic, and I'm already with the road project, have a water issue. They're supposed to put channel drains in, they haven't done it. Some catch basins behind the curb, that hasn't been done. So, the water would be a concern with the setbacks going out the window with the new road, the additional, like, I lost, I'm 15-foot off the roadway. Building next to me was going to be torn down, they're six-foot off the back curb. So, there's some concerns with what their plan is with traffic, because we shared the driveway that they're going to use for the entrance. For the most part, as long as those are addressed, not totally against their plan, obviously. You know, something needs to be done with the property, so.
Yeah, fair enough, yeah.
But generally speaking, it's just more of, you know, it's going to stay partially gravel, but we need some water management. The swale behind where they're going to do the, the landscape buffer in the back is all eroded as it is. So, that directs the water out of where it's intended to be, pending what ODOT and Claremont County do with the additional water, since the culverts are gone and they put storm sewer in, but now we've got no behind-the-curb water management. You know, that's, that's an issue. You know, I've already had water come in under the sidewall of my building in the last couple of rains, because I've got, all the elevations are different. The prints for the road were six-years-old. There's a lot of changes in six-years. You work off of that, and they don't drop the elevation of the road where you think the back of curb was supposed to be four inches off the original pavement in my parking lot. It's, it was seven and a half at the lowest point to 11. So, now I've got a gray toward, so there's just, the water that comes off of that lot to my lot has nowhere to go except downhill. They're all downhill. So, as long as there's water management and those items, and we can work around the shared entry, you know, then I don't want to, like I say, I don't know if I should go for or against, you know what I mean?
Fair enough, yeah, fair enough. Appreciate you very much.
I don't, you know, don't want to make a neighbor mad, so to speak, already. You know what I mean? It's just, they, these are concerns that I have, so, you know.
All set, yeah. Either, do you have a question for? No, I appreciate you very much, thank you for your time.
Thank you for sharing that.
Is there anyone else that is a opponent of this case? Okay, seen none, I will close public discussion, and a gentleman will open up for discussion. Ms. Becker?
My opposition is really more philosophical than anything else. I'm sitting here just making a few bullet points to kind of sum up my thought process. First off, Union Township is dwindling in the amount of available land. Therefore, what we have left, I would like to prioritize it for better uses. You know, we've been hearing for years from residents, we want to hear, we want to see higher-end restaurants, we want to see higher-end retail. Storage facilities doesn't fit either of those. In addition, most storage facilities, including this one, doesn't create any jobs, and it's a minimal increase to the tax base as well. And generally speaking, they're less than valuable. So, for that, for those reasons, and maybe more I haven't thought of at the moment, I'm opposed to this.
Mr. Logue?
I'm just taking note on the relief for the setbacks, it's tight, here what Mr. Becker's saying. Gravel in the lot, it's still, that's not traditionally something that we've been supportive of. Hearing Jason's concerns there with water, you know, it's not one of the scenario, scenarios like likewise where we've had before with business expansions where they get to improve the catch basins and the distribution of rain and water runoff because they have all the storm water management plan in place. I don't see that with, with this plan, so, you know.
We'd be happy to pave the lot, that's a stick point, and we will, we are going to engage in a large, new storm, or, just a fairly large, that's it.
Yeah.
Without even knowing it's valuable, it's hard to consider.
I appreciate that. Hate to be a stiffer, but unfortunately, it's, public comments have ended. My apologies, my apologies about that, yeah.
So, yeah, I, I think going down that path, that's the benefit of the staff and pre-application meeting, but I think, you know, Mr. Becker, you're right philosophically, as far as what's being relieved and what's being required and what's being asked in that location. I mean, I, I don't see a viable solution to the relief requested right now, at least that's the perspective that I see.
What would you, so, so, Mr. Becker, you're, you're just opposed to the business concept as a whole, and it's nothing to do with paved or not paved, or setback, not setback, is that, is that what I'm hearing?
That's exactly correct, and, you know, I'm not taking a position, you know, no never to any, you know, any storage facilities anywhere in Union Township. In this particular location, or what I would consider, you know, kind of the, you know, major business district, or the, or the parts we're looking to improve or bring up, I, I'd rather have that land available for better, better purposes.
Mr. Logue, are you the same mindset, basically?
A little, little different, I'm more specific on the, the amount of relief being requested for the location and the infrastructure around it. I don't necessarily want to tell business how to do business in one sense, but at the same rate, I know there's strong community sentiment that does not necessarily support, support at least that visually from that standpoint, but that's not necessarily my determination, my, my position, my positions on the relief requested and the gravel. It's, again, the concept there is it's kind of trying to make, you know, something fit that's not necessarily set up to fit for it.
Yeah, I'm, okay, so I'll tell you my position. Mr. Becker's right, we did a survey, the residents are, hate to say this, just, it is what it is, I'm giving the feedback of data, not Joe Dills' opinion, but they're sick and tired of apartment buildings, multifamily, they're sick and tired of senior homes, they're sick and tired of storage facilities in Union Township, and mattress stores. So, that's, that's just honest data feedback, whether it's my opinion or not, I'm not giving it to you, I'm just saying, that's the data we got back. So, he's right, they don't, the residents don't want this. It's, and I do, and actually, because I, two months ago, you both were nays, and I was yay on this, and so, but then I was talking with our fire department, it does, it is a lot crammed in one area, and it could present a potential hazard, and then I was talking to some folks on our, on our zoning board about this as well, and they agreed with that. I'm not a fan of the gravel. It would have to be, this is my recommendation, and is, because it sounds like you, you might have a two-to-one vote in favor of this, potentially, but I need you to connect with Mark, Mr. McCormick, and, and come up with a plan that wouldn't be so packed, because I feel like you're packing a lot, and you're really close to the road, and it's not your fault, I mean, it's ODOT's fault for expanding that road, and you are asking for a variance for the residents behind you, and your argument might be, well, there's other businesses that are already close to that, but still, you are pretty close to the residents behind you. This is my recommendation, is, we can vote on this, but I'm going to be a no vote. I would say let's defer this and not vote on this tonight, and you hook up with Mr. McCormick and see if you can't come up with a better plan that'd be suitable for our zoning board and for this board up here. He's a no-go regardless. Basically, me and, me and Mr. Logue on this, and, and also, I would recommend, can you, can you, can you get on your computer and, and show us what it's going to really look like? I need you to show me, because the, the PowerPoint we had up here, it was from a distance, and you're saying high-quality building materials, but I, I want to see what that looks like. I want to see what your plan is, your vision is, and how, you can only beautify storage facilities so much, and I understand that, but I still want to see it. And also, your signage plan, I assume you want to sign out front, I'd like to see that as well. And, and, and I'm going to tell you, you're, you're going to want to pave it, because you have residents right behind you, and I know your traffic's not going to be much, it's probably going to be five to 10 a day, I understand that, but our job is to protect the business owners and residents, and if, and if there is, you know, if you've got residents right in your backyard, and there's dust potentially, things like that, I'd like to see a plan that's not so compacted, so my fire department gives me their blessing, say, yes, we're, we're good on this as far as a safety hazard. It's going to have to be paved, and I want to see what it's going to look like. So, with that being said, I'm going to make a motion to table this, and I'm going to give him a chance for one more time to hook up with Mr. McCormick and come up with a better plan, and I want to see what it's going to look like too. Hopefully, that's okay. If you want us to vote on this, I could vote on it tonight, but I'd prefer to table this, if that's okay. He's a no-go, but you got two, two to convince, so, because it is such a small area, and I, I drive by this every day, every day I drive by this, and I don't, I mean, and I appreciate you wanting to buy the property and clean it up. I, I want you to know I appreciate that. It needs to be cleaned up, it's an ugly site, it's just ugly, it's called spade to spade, it's just ugly, and you're going to pretty it up, and I appreciate that. I just want to make sure we do it the right way. So, with that being said, I'm going to entertain a motion, gentlemen, to table zoning case 13-23-0 as an Oscar.
So, moved.
Second.
Any further discussion on that?
I can't do it.
Oh, no discussion, just. Mr. Campbell, roll call.
Mr. Becker?
Yes.
Mr. Logue?
Yes.
Mr. Dills?
Yes.
Motion's tabled.
Hopefully, that's okay, gentlemen. Yeah, appreciate it, thank you. Okay, next item, and the agenda is correspondence. Mr. Campbell, is there any correspondence tonight?
Yes, sir, I have one. It is a liquor permit for Tori Rose, T-O-R-E-R-O-S, and Patio LLC at 637 Ohio Pike Suite A. Chief Reese has said the police department has no issues, Mr. McCormick said that they are legally permitted to do so. That concludes my correspondence.
Mr. Campbell, thank you. Moving on, next item, and I apologize, at the beginning of the meeting, I did not announce this, but all of you look, for the most part, like regular, so I think you understand. For public comments, I need you to have a thought, a comment card, we'll collect those so we have your information. Is there anyone at this point that would like to speak on public comments? Okay, seen none, we're going to close that, and personnel actions, seen none, department heads, and either one of the chiefs, I apologize, I will be walking out in the middle when you're talking, so please, no disrespect taken, so, but we'll start out with department heads with their monthly reports. We'll start off with our acting chief, Mr. Mark Fife, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Dills. During the month of November, the fire department responded to 157 fire and service calls, 522 EMS calls. Those calls resulted in 487 patient contacts and 396 patient transports to area hospitals. We participated in 1,309 hours of training. 29 public education details, conducted eight life safety inspections, and nine inspections with the Claremont County Building Department. And that concludes my report.
I will bow back. Thank you, chief, appreciate that, and at this point, Vice Chairman Becker's going to take over, but Tony, Chief Reese?
Go with your.
Oh, I'm sorry, gentlemen, did you have any questions for Mr. Fife? I'm sorry.
I do not.
Okay.
No, thank you.
I'm sorry, off my game.
There was discussion last meeting about radios.
Yes.
Would you like something in writing about that, or do you want to discuss that now?
Can we discuss that in January?
Yes.
Is that okay? Because I do want to ask some questions more about that, I'd like to get the ball rolling, because I know those expire, we're going to need new ones, so, but, thank you. And Chief Reese, I'll be taking off, thank you, and Vice Chairman, thank you. Appreciate you.
Thank you, Mr. Dills. In the month of November, the communication center handled 4,700 calls for service for police, fire, and EMS, and 5,100. calls for service for police, fire, and EMS, and five-thousand-one-hundred-and-thirty-one total calls. Our records section processed three-hundred-and-eighty-five juvenile and adult court-related documents for the courts. They processed sixty-three court notices for officers' personal appearance in court, processed ten Rule Sixteens for the prosecutor's office, issued one vendor permit, handled one-hundred-and-fifty-three public records requests, and processed thirteen video redactions. In the area of public affairs, officers conducted eight public relations events during the month of November, including a safety meeting with seniors, attending a fall festival at a local church, and a Cub Scout tour of the police headquarters. In the area of operations, officers handled or took three-hundred-and-two incident reports, one-hundred-and-twenty-two crash reports, made six-hundred-and-thirty-five traffic stops, issued one-hundred-and-eighty-eight citations, wrote four-hundred-and-ninety-three written warnings, made seventy-six criminal arrests, seventy-eight traffic arrests, and served seventy-two warrants. Union Township Bonder Guard in the month of November participated in three events, including presenting the colors at a Veterans, at Veterans Park in remembrance of Veterans Day, and presenting colors on Veterans Day at Crosspoint Baptist Church. They also presented the colors at the annual Nick Erde Foundation Benefit down in Matavia. Officers attended two-hundred-and-ninety-six hours of training in the month of November, and fuel costs for the month were twelve-thousand-seven-hundred-and-sixty-six dollars, with forty-seven-thousand-two-hundred-and-seventy-seven miles driven by the officers. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Chief Reese. Mr. Logue, any comments or questions?
No, thank you, Mr., uh, Chief Reese, appreciate the updates, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Taylor?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Becker. In the cemetery division, from November first through the thirtieth, eleven burials were performed, generating six-thousand-seven-hundred-and-seventy-five dollars. Four resident graves were purchased for twenty-eight-hundred dollars, six non-resident graves were purchased for ten-thousand-two-hundred dollars, one columbarium niche for twelve-hundred dollars. The total amount generated for the period was twenty-four-thousand-one-hundred-and-thirty-one dollars. In the roads division, a total of fifteen work orders were completed on township roads. Staff prepared salt trucks in preparation for winter, and staff attended a Public Works winter training course at Sycamore Township. And in the parks, staff continued collecting leaves, or obviously in various township buildings and parks, and staff completed the installation of all Christmas lights and decorations at the civic center. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor. Mr. Logue, anything?
No, thank you, Mr. Taylor, appreciate it. We just, we look forward to the next, next, get through the winter, I know.
Yes.
Service partner never wants, wants that. We have the, the nice trucks that at least help with the snow this year, and then look forward to the springtime with the improvements at Clepper Park for pickleball and playground equipment moving, playground moving to Mount Carmel Park, so.
Yes.
That's really great, so, thanks for the team's work and dedication on that.
Thank you, sir.
It's exciting, it's nice, it's very rewarding to drive through that park now and see it getting more busy with activity from the dog park to just seeing what the potential's going to be when the pickleball's open and, and how that is, so, thank you, good work.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. McCormick, planning concerning?
Okay, for the month of November, in terms of zoning inspections and violations, we had fifty-four inspections, seven complaints, four unfounded complaints, three warning citations, one fifteen-day non-compliance letter, not, one thirty-day violation letter, six cases resolved, three-hundred-and-thirty, thirty-seven signs removed, eleven miscellaneous issues, five violations in the monthly total, and six re-inspections of violations. For permit activity, we had three commercial permits, three changes of use, five signs, two temporary signs, three single-family houses, two additions, nine accessory permits, five pools, and thirty-two permits total for the month, revenue of twenty-nine-thousand-six-hundred-and-ninety-three dollars, primarily from the Kroger permit application that we received, and I think Wawa was also included in that number, and both have been permitted. And then the fire department revenue for the month was four-hundred-and-seventy-one dollars, and that concludes my report.
Mr. Logue?
Thank you, Mr. McCormick.
Well, that concludes the department reports. We move on, continuing the agenda to comments from the board members. Mr. Logue?
Wow, we're already wrapping up 2023, and it's hard to believe. It's, it's definitely been an exciting year, and there's so much exciting work and opportunities that's come right around the corner here in Union Township, and engaging with the community, and just excited for that, so. It's unfortunate, we're missing, Mr. Dills has got to be with his family right now, that's very important, but really, just have to hit that up in January and tell them, you know, that he did a, a great job, and great opportunity, leading as chairman of the board for this 2023 year. So, keep it at that, I just hope that everyone had a nice time with friends and family for Thanksgiving, and upcoming plans for Christmas, and for those that you're missing, friends, family, and loved ones, you know, reach out and call somebody, if you need to reach out and call somebody. That's what community is all about, so, I know it's not always easiest for everybody, so. That's what's on my mind for tonight, Mr. Becker, hand it to you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Logue. I, I guess only comment, just a couple things come to mind, so, earlier, I was talking about what the one-point-seven million dollars we're doing for road improvement, that is just township roads. The big, the big highways, the major roads going through Union Township are, are county roads or they're state highways. So, you know, you know, when, so just to clarify, that's where that money's going, township roads only. Also, again, I'd like to just congratulate Mr. Logue on his reelection, looking forward to another, at least two more years serving together, at least with, with us, and, you know, just want to say Merry Christmas, Happy New Year to everybody. And with that, move on to upcoming events. So the, the building's going to be closed for Christmas Day, twenty-fifth, it's going to be closed January first for New Year's Day. Our reorganization meeting for 2024 is going to be on January the second, that's going to be at six PM, or, or usual time. On January the ninth, we are going to have our regular business meeting, and it'll be the next day, the tenth is when Corey Wright will, will, will start as our new administrator. And then on January fifteenth, the building will also be closed for Martin Luther King Day, and of course, nine-one-one emergency services will be open twenty-four-seven regardless. And with that, there's no other further business before the board, we are adjourned.
Make a motion.
Make a motion.
Motion to adjourn, move to adjourn.
So, uh, so moved.
So moved, second. Roll call. Mr. Logue?
Yes.
Mr. Becker?
Yes.
We are adjourned at seven-sixteen PM.
I knew you were looking for that, there you go.